You have for your approval the council proceedings of January 13th and 27.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would like to move to approve January 13th and 2020, or excuse me, 13th and 27 of 2025 minutes as presented.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any questions or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies and we have a tribute in recognition of the Women's Center of Greater Lansing for their 20 years of service.
Right. I am going to pass the gavel. And Rebecca, do you want to come on down?
There we go. Perfect. All right. I have the Director of the Women's Center of Greater Lansing here with me today to honor this great place. It's on Michigan Avenue, for those that aren't aware, on their 20 years of service to our community. I'm not going to read through the whole resolution because it's small print and I can't read, but I wanted to read that last part on this, that the Lansing City Council congratulates and applauds the Women's Center of Greater Lansing on 20 years of service to our community and its unwavering fight to tackle the challenges the community faces. And with that, I have a big motion.
All right. Thank you, President Koss. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
I want to just, first of all, thank everyone who's supported the center and has supported us for the past 20 years. This next year is going to be amazing. We're only going to do amazing things. And for those of you who are around on Saturday is our 20th anniversary We Laugh show. So if you're looking for some comedy, I hope to see you on Saturday.
Okay, we are to community event announcement. I'm sorry, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Do we have any comments? Councilman Hussein.
Sure. First, I'd like to thank the folks from Lansing Board of Water Light that came out to Councilman Garza and myself's constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. We had Bill Lansing, we had Brenna Pewen, we also had Mr. Dick Pefley did, I thought, an incredible job, not only presenting on the South Lansing Transmission Reinforcement Project, but also taking a number of questions regarding smart meters, shut offs, pretty much the presentation that we heard earlier from community of the whole. There were a number of questions pertaining to that information. And so I thought they did a really, really good job in terms of being accessible, transparent, and candid. Also want to thank Mayor Shore, who was on hand, talked a lot about upcoming initiatives, initiatives underway, and kind of vision for South Lansing moving forward. So that was certainly appreciated. Also opened himself up to questions and answers. And I thought the group did an incredible job. I think helping kind of move that conversation. Also, I wanted to, South Lansing, a very, very organized area. And so we have a number of neighborhood groups and associations that will be meeting in the coming weeks. And so I wanted to announce first that the Churchill Downs Community Association will be meeting Tuesday, February 18th. So this is the first meeting of the year for them. That is at 6:30 PM. They always meet at the Frieder Schmidt Southside Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room. So that is at 5825 Wise Road. Luton Rich Neighborhood Association will have their first meeting of the year. And that's at, let's see, Mayflower Congregational Church at 2901 West Mount Hope. And that is at 7:00 PM on February 20th. And then Rejuvenating South Lansing will actually have its second meeting of the year. And that is February 25th, 6:30 PM. And they also meet in the Sandy Allen Room at the Frieder Schmidt Southside Community Center. And then the only other thing I wanted to discuss really quickly is that the applications for the Small Business Facade Program, that application window is live right now. And if you're not familiar with this particular program, we have actually funded and initiated, or I should say executed this program for the last several years. We, at about $175,000 per year, actually put money out into the community to make sure that the small businesses along our commercial corridors can engage in transformational projects, aesthetic projects, design projects. And I'm hoping that folks make mention, and we're trying to come up with informational flyers and things like that, but make mention when you go into your favorite South Lansing business. And I said this at the meeting on Saturday, but we just do not have enough of these dollars, in my opinion, kind of landing in South Lansing. So again, I hope that folks make mention of the fact that there is this program. You certainly can point people to the LEDC website. Again, that's the LEDC website. There's a lot of information, particularly contact information, which might be helpful on that particular website. And so the more applicants we can get, the better. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Do you have any other council remarks? All right, seeing none.
I have no remarks. So we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you up to a minute to tell us the details.
May as well. So again, a reminder that the Old Everett Neighborhood Association does not have a neighborhood meeting this month. It will have a neighborhood meeting in March on the third Wednesday at 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard at 6:30 PM. The Village Lansing, so please attend if you can. Also, we're currently in the process of having to start our bank account and collect neighborhood grants. So we'll be looking at a certain day to start working on that. So, and we're still recruiting new members. So if anyone's interested, please consider applying.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, we are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. So if you wish to address the city council on items four through 23 on the agenda, please sign in with Haley in the next minute or so. And that does include the special hearing on the noise waiver. So items four through 23 again. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things. I'll try and be quick, but brief. First, thank you to Councilman Hussein, Councilman Garza, for the opportunity on Saturday. I thought it was a fantastic meeting with many of the South Lansing constituents. I know there were four council members there, and I know that that was probably the max you could have because we didn't want to have quorum. So thank you to all that showed up. But I thought it was great. And thank you to the residents that were there. As some reminders, Friday, winter taxes are due. So please file winter taxes. If you do it after Friday, there will be a penalty. We certainly don't want to see that. We want people to get them in before the deadline. So please by this Friday. I was going to announce the Women's Center of Greater Lansing's event at Graywall Hall this Saturday as well. Rebecca did that. And that'll be great. We have our, another of our budget discussions tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Nut House downtown, or by the stadium, the stadium district, where we will talk about budget and hear from people about the budget. So that's six to eight at the Nut House. We have our mobile food pantry Saturday morning at 9:00 AM at Union Missionary Baptist Church. Then a few other things. One, we have completed salting neighborhood roads on Friday evening. So there was, I know we've heard a lot of questions about ice on neighborhood roads. We heard that on Saturday at that meeting. And so we have salted the entire city. If anybody was missed, please contact 311 and it'll get to public service. We don't think so, but just in case. And then we know that there's likely going to be a lot of snow coming this week. We think there's going to be seven and a half inches. I know Councilman Koss has raised this, and I appreciate that. So our folks are ready to get out and be plowing. In the event that it's needed, we will have ready a potential snow emergency. In our ordinance, there are three levels of snow emergency, and the Public Service Director makes that call. So certainly, if he makes that call, we will push that out to the community. We'll work with LPD. What it mostly means is that you can't park on the streets so that we can plow the streets. And we want to make sure we can get those streets plowed. So we prefer that people, if that happens, as a warning, that we prefer that people move their cars from the streets. But again, LPD and Public Service will make that announcement. I wanted to announce to everyone that in working with Councilwoman Pallivani Glue, and I didn't have a chance to tell you about this in advance, I apologize, we're going to make a big announcement, but I'll tell council first. The City of Lansing now has women's feminine products in all of our buildings, free. This is something other communities have done. Councilwoman brought this to us. It was a good idea. Took us a little longer than I was hoping to do it, but we had to get the machines, and we piloted it. So all the buildings that are open now have the machines in them. And then over the summer, we'll be adding them to other buildings that will be opening, you know, park, different parks and things like that, that have their warming areas. So thank you, Councilwoman Pallivani Glue. And excited to see that. And we'll make a bigger announcement to the rest of the city. But I think that's a big positive for us. I had facade improvement on my list. You all heard Councilman Hussein. He has requested on behalf of South Lansing businesses, but really for all businesses for the city, an opportunity for the facade improvement program to stay open a little longer. And we're going to do that. Councilman Hussein spoke with our EDC, and we all talked about it. The pre-submission is still going to be March 17th. And then the full application deadline will be extended. It was March 31st. We think it'll be first or second week of April, but we're going to work through that. But it will be extended. And also, in talking and after hearing some requests from Councilman Hussein, we'll push it out on social media with testimonials like we have. They have creating a flyer, and we're going to push that out through our CIAs. We're going to provide to city council, and we ask you to provide it to all of your business owners. A lot of you know a lot of different business owners, and we certainly want everyone to have that opportunity. There'll also be some business and property outreach in several areas, especially on our corridors and business districts that don't have CIAs or don't have an Old Town Association or a Rio Town Association. And then Kalia on the EDC staff will be available to answer questions. And she's also going to hold some office hours so that she can help out folks that are looking to connect and that want some assistance with that program. So good request. I appreciate that. And good conversation in getting to a place where hopefully we can provide more all around the city. Although in looking at the numbers, I do 100% agree that the Second and Third Ward have just not gotten the same number of projects that the First and Fourth Ward have gotten. So we certainly want to make sure that's an equitable distribution. Not to say anything bad about the First and Fourth Wards, love them too, but we want to make sure that this is spreading across the city. Second to last, I probably won't comment on this later. I am fully supportive of your ordinance change, and I appreciate that you all are bringing this up. That will allow local subcontractors to have preference under our policy. We all know this came up. We had a situation where we didn't have a local company bid for steel on the public safety complex, and we ended out giving it to the bidder that qualified under the ordinance, which was not somebody that we believe is going to use local subs. So you all know we have a local preference policy, but it only pertains to those that bid. When that came up, I had really good conversation with Councilman at the time, Councilman Koss, Council President Garza, a few others on this body, indicating that I agree that we should have subs that are listed for local preference. So I want to compliment Councilman Garza, Councilman Koss, and the rest of this body for getting on that, working with OCA, finding the language to make sure that we can have local folks receive our dollars, especially our millage dollars. We want those folks working. We have a lot more work to come with the public safety complex, with a variety of city projects. So I am fully supportive of what you're all going to consider today, and appreciate it. Finally, I know there have been questions. It's been reported in the news. We've had conversations about the appointments process. I have received a request from the council president to put online those that have applied for appointments. As we know, I'm always happy to work with council members on their requests, as I've done with, feels like just about everybody here. We are looking at the best and most efficient way to do this. We have about 300 applications in this four-year term, some with people that have withdrawn, some with people that have been appointed. So we are likely, we likely won't just put all the applications online because then they would all have to be redacted for address and phone number. But we're thinking about a spreadsheet that has everybody that has applied, when they applied, which boards, three or four boards they can apply for. So we're looking at that. And I want to make sure to get that in the right place to put it up. Unfortunately, we've already had one person who's contacted us and said that they were withdrawing because of the controversy. I don't know that there's really a controversy, but we certainly are pushing back on that. And I will let you know when this is all online. Again, we have to get it to the right place, and we will get it all online. Additionally, and this hasn't been brought up, one of the bigger problems that we've seen with the appointment process is that we put someone into vetting, and we kind of lock up that spot internally. Someone's in vetting, one of you come to me and say, hey, you know, I have a constituent who wants to be on a board. What about this board? And I say, we have someone in vetting. Well, you don't know that. Nobody knows that. So we had a really good meeting with the clerk. And we are going to, assuming it works out with the clerk, there are two documents that are online now. There's one list of boards and commissions, which I think everybody sees pretty often. And there's a second one that says expired and vacant. And I don't think anybody really looks at that. So Chris and I talked, and we both decided it would make sense to just combine those two into one document. Just add another column that says, you know, that literally says if there's something in progress. And then we're going to provide to Chris, to Clerk Swope, information when we have a candidate in vetting. So that list will not only indicate the board, the terms, it will also indicate either if we have sent someone to council, then the clerk will put the name of that person that's been sent to council. If we haven't sent someone to council, but we know that someone is coming your way once they pass vetting, we will just say candidate in vetting. I don't want to put the name on there in case they don't pass vetting. That's not, that shouldn't be public. But we will at least list candidate in vetting, someone who's coming your way. And if neither of those are there, then that spot is open and available. I think that is the best way to be transparent with the public so they understand these are the ones that are open and available. They can apply and potentially get that right away. If they want a different board and they're willing to wait, then they can apply to a different board. So in working with the clerk, we'll have that, and then we'll have the spreadsheet of everyone that applied. And that's what we're, that's what we're working on. I know I promised an update. That's my update. And as soon as we have that, the combined list, we'll let you all know. We already have the combined list. Chris is already on top of that. So the combined list is already available. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for getting that done in two days. And we will have the appointments list up soon. We're working on it and finalizing it. And when that's up, I will email everybody here. So that's the update, and I think I've taken up enough of your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And again, that's items four through 23 on the agenda. And item four is a public hearing, a noise special permit to allow for the combined sewer overflow 015 South project.
Yes. So this, today's public hearing was, again, for the noise special permit. We had Mark Jones here, Committee of a Hole, back on January 6th, from out of Public Service, who presented pretty much in short, just to introduce or present information notifying those impacted neighborhoods, which consist of, I believe it was west of MLK and south of Saginaw, all the way to Michigan Avenue. The expectations that was presented is that the contractors would work on Saturdays for the duration of the contract pending any increment weather conditions. This work will start at 8:00 or 8:00 AM until sunset, which was roughly, or I think he mentioned 3:30-ish. But Mr. Jones did inform the body that he is aware of any previous complaints, and that that would have been addressed at that particular time, or if there's any afterwards, he will connect with the contractors. And after tonight's hearing, the request will be sent back to Committee of a Hole on February 24th.
Thank you.
Okay. I do also want to acknowledge, on the public hearing, we have five messages, five written comments in opposition to the waiver, and one in support of the special permit. And here to speak tonight, we have Deb Mulcahy, followed by Peter Oliva.
Council President Koss, council members, and mayor. I want to make it clearly understood that I support the need to convert to CSO. I've been supportive of this for years. What I don't see is the continual need to impact further with the activities as proposed with the waiver. We've been living with this project for over two years, on the east side of MLK, on MLK, a block north and a block south, coming soon to our block. I don't understand the documented need for allowing the construction activity six out of seven days. Not only has my neighborhood been dealing with this six out of seven days from the waivers that have been granted before, but all winter, yes, all winter, they've been working all winter. City of Lansing staff told me that this need was based on a court order. Really? 20 years ago, they were supposed to be doing this. You know, you can go before the court and say, we have a problem, if there's really a problem. I do not know what you think of when you're asked to grant a noise waiver, but it's more than noise. It's quality of life. I'm almost immune to the beep, 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 beep that we all hear when vehicles back up. What I'm not immune to are the loud bangs that make me feel like I'm living in an earthquake. I have gone and looked up to see if we've had an earthquake in Lansing more times than I care to tell you. It feels like my house is imploding for various activities that they're doing. The issue of having it on Saturday during the summer months, and Council Vice President Carter, I would share with you that if Mr. Jones said that it would be only from 8:00 to 3:30 sunset, well, fortunately, we have longer days of sunset than 3:30 in the summer. But they're going to work all summer. There's an air pollution issue associated with this. This is the trucks coming and going, trucks that have been uncovered that I have reported multiple times. Mark Jones says it's from a local work area. The local work area, their area that I'm told by the city, is getting gravel and soil materials from Jackson and Grand Ledge. That's hardly local. Many people in my neighborhood do not have air conditioning. They need to be able to open their windows. And we have an area that has a high degree of asthma. Asthma relationships to income levels are known correlated. When we have vehicles that are coming, they have problems with their staging. These are tractor trailers that are uncovered, and they sit idle in front of our homes for half an hour. And I'm not talking one, I'm talking a few of them. Those are concerns in reference to air quality. If we really need to have this done on Saturdays, I would like somebody to tell me why. Because there was nothing in the postcard to tell us why this really needed to be done. I've asked for speed issues to be addressed. We have traffic concerns. We're in a neighborhood of 25 miles an hour. Andy Colpatrick has said, as our public service person, it's a tight neighborhood. The roads are narrow. Our right of ways from our homes are very close. So I would ask you not to grant this waiver, and thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Oliva, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, Mr. Mayor. I also object to issuance of the waiver for it. I won't re-articulate whatever Deborah said now, but we are living on South Genesee, and immediately south of us, on Chiwasi, they're working, and they have been working all winter. And immediately north on North Genesee, and just to the east of us, they worked. I have never experienced a contractor in a project where there's this much vibration pounding and noise going on with the big equipment they're doing. This spring and summer, they're going to be right in front of our house, or that's the schedule. It will be far greater than that with windows open and that. So we don't need to expand it from five days a week to six days. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Nicholas Zandi.
So you know who I am. I am Nicholas Zandi, and I am here to speak about every single show cause hearing about making safe or demolish several properties that have more than likely been red-tagged. And I'll just make this very clear again, where I stand on the issue of red tagging. This is an issue, and you've heard me so many times say that by doing nothing over the years about the red tag issue, all these show cause hearings are going to pile up significantly to the point where it's going to take up almost the entire agenda. And guess what? Look at the agenda. It's taking up most of the agenda now. Like, how in the world did the city just do nothing for so long to the point where now it's taking up most of the agenda at one meeting? This is just baffling that the city never even considered doing anything to stop some of those landlords or protect some of those homeowners before these issues escalate to the point where now there has to be a show cause hearing about it. This is, and also considering that one of them is actually really close to the Old Everett neighborhood, like just due south of it. That is honestly a bit too close for home for my liking. And speaking of the whole red tag thing in my neighborhood, I actually have just about two properties that have been red tagged for many years because their owners have been neglecting it for several years because, as far as I know, the city's been neglecting them. This is really something that should have been addressed long ago. And again, if this is a landlord property that needs to, that has been red tagged, then the landlord's got to be punished. Because they should have the money and the funds to keep their property up and running. And if this is a random homeowner, which I'm pretty sure some of these are, then they should have been helped earlier before this red tag thing even escalated to that point. This is just so infuriating that this has escalated to this point where now the show cause hearings about red tags and demolishing and making safe have now taken up almost the entire consent agenda. Do better, city, and do something.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearing, item four, the noise special permit.
Committee of the Hole.
And we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes. So we do have quite a few. So I will move the consent agenda with removing the tribute number five in recognition of Women's Center. We have adopted that already. But we are going to move into the tribute number six in recognition of 2025 Pastor's Salute Tribute in recognition of Kelly Ellsworth-Etchinson. Several setting of show cause hearings in order to make safe or demolish to the owners of 204 East Potter Avenue, 1232 North Washington Avenue, 1616 South Cedar Street, 1300 West Maple Street, 5625 K North Road, 1723 Osmond Avenue, 1023 Porter, 308 East Caesar Chavez Avenue, and 5141 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. We also have a grant acceptance for Letts Tennis Courts Rehabilitation and Construction, another grant acceptance for National Trust for Historic Preservation, a grant acceptance for the Office of Financial Empowerment, OS Reentry Program, and a grant acceptance for the Lansing Police Department Byron Justice Assistance Grant.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
We are to resolutions for action. We have item 21, nonprofit recognition.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Cost. We have a nonprofit recognition for community and schools of Michigan. It's a part of their gaming license to be able to be, to do charity in the community, and so they've been around for a few decades, and that was their request. And so, I make a motion to move.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Hussein.
Just curious, in terms of what they are actually applying for the gaming license for, is it, are they doing a raffle, are they?
Thank you. To raise money for their organizations, so like raffle, bingo, those type of activities, they came to the committee and discussed.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, item 22 is setting a special hearing for Glenburn Commons.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. This is to set a public hearing for special assessment with Glenburn Commons trash and grass abatement. This is something that has happened every year for quite some time. The association of the condos dissolved several years ago, so every year, the city comes out and does trash and grass, and then at the end of the year, asks for a special assessment to, I guess, if I can use the word, charge the landowners for each of their portion. So this year, it looks about $51.99 per occupied parcel for 2024 maintenance cost. So I'll move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
We are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 206 of the Lansing Qualified Ordinances, Section 206.16, preference for local bidders, to remove the upper threshold of $1 million, and further clarify what bidders may have the opportunity to match the lowest qualifying bid from a non-Lansing bidder. The ordinance is read a second time by its title, it was reported from the Committee on City Operations, and it is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you. We have the local bidder ordinance, a quick summary is, this report, this proposed ordinance amends Section 206.16 of the Lansing Qualified Ordinances to remove the upper threshold of $1 million for local bidder preference, and clarify the conditions under which Lansing-based businesses can match the lowest qualified bid from a non-Lansing competitor. The ordinance defines key terms such as Lansing-based business, subcontractor, and joint venture, ensuring that businesses with a physical and economic presence in Lansing receive preference in city contracts. It mandates that departments solicit at least one quote from a Lansing-based business for purchase under $15,000 whenever possible, and establishes a process for local businesses to match the lowest bid on contracts exceeding that amount. For contracts above $15,000, Lansing-based businesses within a certain percentage of the lowest bid can match it and receive the award. If no local businesses exercise this option, the opportunity exists to non-Lansing businesses that commit to using Lansing-based subcontractors' local workforce. The ordinance also includes provisions for eliminating bond requirements in some cases, and encourages joint ventures to help Lansing businesses compete. Additionally, the ordinance specifies compliance measures and limitations on subcontracting to non-Lansing businesses. And with that, I move for passage.
Okay, this is roll call vote.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelivana Glu.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Is adopted. Councilman Garza.
I'd like to make a motion for immediate effect.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Passes 6-1.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you wish to address city council, please sign in on the yellow sheet in the back in the next minute, if you haven't already. And with that, we are to referral items.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'll make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by Council President Cost.
We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, from the city clerk minutes of the boards and commissions.
Place on file.
City of Lansing 24, 2024 Annual Report.
Place on file.
General Fund Status Report for the second quarter.
Committee of the Hall, internal auditor.
Vacancy Report for the second quarter.
Committee of the Hall, internal auditor.
Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Rules of Procedure.
Committee of the Hall.
Nonprofit Recognition Everett High School Vikings Alumni Association.
City Operations.
Grant Acceptance Help America Vote Act Physical Security and Election Resiliency Grant.
Ways and Means, internal auditor.
From the mayor, we have the reappointment of Sean Gailey to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
Place on file.
And we have two items relative to a noise special permit for the combined sewer overflow 019 project.
City Operations.
We have three traffic control orders regulating parking, one on Wayburn Road, one on Eaton Road, and one on Thomas, West Thomas Street.
City Operations.
We have two items relative to orders to make safer, demolish to the owners of 1033 Shepherd Street.
Public Safety.
We have a budget amendment carryforwards from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25.
Committee of the Hall, internal auditor.
And we have the deficit elimination plan for the fringe benefits plan.
Committee of the Hall, internal auditor.
Okay, we have a claim appeal from Aklima Mohammed Assa for $2,130 in trash fees at 1807 Ray Street.
City Operations.
And we have three notices from the Liquor Control Commission relocating liquor licenses 1705 West Mount Hope, 4700 Pleasant Grove Road, and 4519 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
City Operations.
We are to a motion of excused absence.
Vice President Carter.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Spatafor.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
All right, we are to remarks by council members.
Any further remarks by anybody tonight? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Seeing none.
Okay, we're to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Nicholas Zandi.
Am I really the only one who's had to sign up for this? Oh, may as well speak. And first off, weird that parts of the agenda were Thanos snapped out of existence. But having said that, in all seriousness, I'm here to speak about the wards, and how certain neighborhoods have been divided between the wards. This includes my precinct, as well as another precinct, where the Clifford Park neighborhood, which is just north of the Old Ever neighborhood, is divided between two wards, both the first ward and the second ward, which Councilmember Cost already raised that issue at the Charter Commission meeting. And also, the Colonial Village neighborhood, that's also divided between two wards, the third ward and the fourth ward. And also, the, just, the neighborhood just south of I-96, Willoughby Road, as I've seen it called on the Nextdoor app, or as I like to call it, Lansing Holt, it's divided between the second and third ward. And you're like, well, isn't it divided by Washington Avenue? Well, it's also isolated from the rest of the city by I-96, meaning that they're really more connected to each other, both sides of Washington, than that one side of Washington is to the rest of the third ward. And thus, the division of the wards makes absolutely no sense at this point. So because of that, they, the Charter Commission absolutely needs to increase the number of wards. And one thing that I've heard from the, from them that has been absolutely appalling, especially from Commissioner, I think it was Boyd, I think it was, she was downright condescending on the issue, saying that she doesn't even really understand the need for more wards. Well, I've already raised that issue, because several neighborhoods, again, are divided, sometimes in the case of the Clifford Park neighborhood, for no reason. And this is proof that they really need to increase the number of wards. And also, no, I am not running for second ward again, just to make that clear, I've already made that clear on Facebook, but the Charter Commission absolutely needs to increase the number of wards, and you should all make this clear as council members, that this needs to happen because of how they're apportioned, and also, they may or may not, the at-large positions may or may not have a racist history, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
Okay, that was our final speaker.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:43.